Okay, everybody, welcome. And we'd like to call the meeting to order to stand for a moment of silence and a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, once again, welcome, everybody, to the January 11th work session legislative meeting of the North Hill School District. At this point, at this time, I would like to turn this over. We have a student performance this evening. Mrs. Lisa Marcellus presents members of the cast of the middle school musical Aladdin Junior, who will perform for us this evening.
I understand how you feel.
Oh, really? And how do I feel?
What you want most is to be free, to make your own choices in your own time. Thank you for saving. Good night.
No, please, stay. You really do remind me of someone.
Really? Who is he?
He was arrested. The one thing he had was his freedom. Well, maybe he'll come back one day. He surprised you. Nobody escapes from Jafar, and even if he did, it wouldn't be death if he ever showed his face around here.
Death? I hadn't really thought about that. Um, would you like to go for a ride? You'd be out of the palace for a little while, you'd get to see the world for a bit, you know? Just be free.
I'd love to. Where are we going?
Where would you like?
Anywhere, everywhere.
Funny. That's exactly what I had in mind.
I can show you love, shining, shimmering, splendid. Tell me, princess, nowhere did you last last your heart aside? I can open your eyes, take you on a ride on earth, open your soul, face it on your own, a magic carpet ride. I'm on you now, I'm your fantastic boy to you. You're like a diamond, where you go, say we're both in the same light. If I may chase our heaven, oh, that I love, so sweet. Now I'm in a world of hope, now I'm in a world of... He's just right, he's a beauty, so be kind to him. I'm on you now, I'm on you now, I'm on you now. I'm like a shooting star, so bright, I can't look, it's where I've been dreaming. With you, my heart, it's moving, out to the valley where you're smiling, where you're letting me share this glory. To you, I'm on you now, and where we'll be, I'll really chase on.
Come join us on February 1st, 2nd, and 3rd at 7:00 on a magic carpet ride to Abbott, carpet ride to Abbott. Thank you again.
Thank you, students, for looking forward to that. Sure. We will now turn the group meeting over to Dr. Manerino for the recognition.
School Board Recognition Month, and I would just like to thank the school board for everything that they do for the students of this district. And we've decided to, again, have the librarians pick books that represent the members of our board and have those books placed in the libraries of our school. So I'd like to turn this over to Olaf, who's going to do the presentation for the students, our student representative.
So as Dr. Manerino mentioned earlier, January is Student Director, or is School Director Recognition Month in Pennsylvania, a time to spotlight the contributions of public school board members across the state. Communities throughout the Commonwealth will take time this month to recognize school director, or, yeah, school directors for their time and dedication to our public schools. Those who serve as school directors truly are public service volunteers. They oversee multimillion dollar budgets, deal with taxation and funding issues, ensure that we have highly qualified teachers, and develop policies that support learning, safety, and personnel and finances. By taking the initiative to serve in, to serve our community, members of the North Hill School Board have made a commitment to the long-term viability of Ross Township and Westview Borough. These forward-thinking individuals are committed to ensuring public schools remain a solid foundation for American democracy and serve as shining examples for students to continue the excellent tradition of volunteerism, a hallmark of our society. We would like to thank the board members in a very special way. A book has been purcha, purp, ah, sorry, has been purchased for each school board member in honor of a particular board member. Each book will go to a different school. There's a book plate inside the cover of each book dedicating the book in your honor. The books may have been chosen on a subject that is of particular interest to you, or it could have been a book that the school's library really wanted to have. Please take a look at the book that has been chosen in your honor and the book plate, and return the books to Mrs. Rieger so that they may be distributed to the school libraries. Now then, will all the students who have been selected to honor our board members this evening, please join us at the podium?
Hello, my name is Katherine Magowee, and I am a 6th grader at High Cliff Elementary. I am here on behalf of my school and the district to show our appreciation for all of the North Hills School District School Board members. But I am also here to specifically celebrate and honor the President of the North Hill School Board, Mr. Ed Walgas. Mr. Walgas has lived in the North Hills for almost 40 years. He and his wife are the proud parents of three daughters, all North Hills graduates. Mr. Walgas has served on our school board for nearly 20 years. Besides currently serving as President of the School Board, he is also the President of the North Hills Foundation and the Vice President of Action Housing Incorporated. His commitment to education and community service is inspirational. The book Here We Are: Notes for Living on Planet Earth, written by and illustrated by Oliver Jeffers, will be added to the High Cliff Elementary Library as a tribute to your service to our school district, Mr. Walgas. This picture book was written by a father to his young son to share basic, simple truths about life and learning. This book will be shared by teachers and parents with our youngest students to help them understand the basic lessons about being a lifelong learner. Thanks to wonderful leaders like you, Here We Are, students learning and living in the North Hills. The author states, "Though we have come a long way, we haven't quite worked everything out, so there is plenty left for you to do." This statement mirrors your commitment to constantly seek new ways to make our district the best it can be. Thank you, Mr. Walgas, for sharing all that you have learned over the years to help guide our district. Your diverse interests, from your knowledge of banking to the love of hunting and fishing, from your role as a parent and grandparent to your community service volunteer, you lead us by your example.
That was great.
I'm a 6th grade student from High Cliff Elementary. I'm happy to represent my school as we celebrate and honor North Hill School Board Member, Dr. Annette Javango-Nolish. Dr. Nolish is a lifelong resident and alumnus of North Hills. She received her bachelor's, master's, and doctorate degrees from Carnegie Mellon University and works as a higher education administrator and business consultant. Dr. Nolish has served on our school board since December of 2013, and was just re-elected for another four-year term. Dr. Nolish has a strong commitment to the arts, starting as a young violinist in our district through serving as the President of the North Hills Instrumental Parents Association while her son Andrew was a student in the district. The book Life, written by Cynthia Ryland and illustrated by Brendan Wenzel, will be added to the High Cliff Elementary Library Collection in your honor, Dr. Nolish. This picture book's theme is, "There is so much to love about life, and life begins small and then it grows." Dr. Nolish, you have shown us through your accomplishments to begin with the things you love and keep those interests growing and expanding to find a rewarding and successful life. Your influence and leadership continue to make a difference and touch the lives of our students and our greater community. Thank you, Dr. Nolish, for your service to our school district.
Dr. Nolish was unable to attend tonight, but I'll accept on her behalf.
My name is Amelia Schultz, and on behalf of McIntyre Elementary, I would like to thank Mr. Michael Witherall for serving as a school board member. Mr. Witherall is a lifelong resident of the North Hill School District and has been the North Hill School District Solicitor since 1984. We appreciate your hard work so we can have the best education possible in the North Hills. McIntyre has selected the book Star Wars Coding Projects to honor your services. First, who doesn't love Star Wars? And secondly, coding helps us learn problem-solving and logical thinking. We are lucky to attend school at North Hill School District because of dedicated people like you. Thank you.
My name is, my name is Isabel Downs, and on behalf of McIntyre Elementary, I would like to thank Mr. Thomas Kelly for serving as a school board member. He has served on the school board since 2005 and is currently serving at his first term. He is also the Vice President of Allegheny Intermediate Unit, is a, and is a former K-12 teacher and administrator. We know you support computer literacy, and T4 have selected the book JavaScript for Kids to honor your service. We appreciate your unwavering commitment to providing an excellent education for the students of North Hills. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Colter Mathis, and I'm a 6th grade student at Ross Elementary. The book Trash Magic: A Book About Recycling Plastic Bottle will be added to the Ross Elementary School Library in honor of school board member Allison Mathis, aka my mom. This book follows the process of an empty juice bottle becoming new plastic, a process which allows less of our Earth soil to be mined. The book also gives great tips on how to help save Earth's and protect Earth's important resources. Trash Magic was chosen to be placed at Ross Elm, Ross Library, in honor of my mom because she's very passionate about recycling. Funny story, every time I put something in the trash can that can be recycled, my mom actually, like, goes over to the trash can, digs through it, takes out what I put in it, and puts it in the recycling bin. So if you think about it, my mom is the most wor, world's most helpful dumpster diver. The book also has some suggestions for crafts that you can make out of plastic bottles, which kids at Ross might be interested in doing at home, or maybe teachers could do that in class. This book will be available to all students at Ross and will hopefully help promote responsible recycling and dedication to wisely protecting our Earth's resources. Mom, you've lived at North, in North Hill School District for a while, and your devotion to supporting the recycling programs at our school will benefit all students in the future. Thank you for being so enthusiastic about our future generations.
Hello, I'm Cool Jazz, and I am here to present Moo by Sharon Creach in honor of the school board member Dee Spade. This book is a novel told in a blend of, is a, is a blend of poetry and prose. In the school, in the story, 12-year-old Rena and her little brother Luke move with their parents to Royal Maine. While Rena expects a life of beaches and lobsters, in reality, she is put to work for a strange neighborhood with several animals, including a snake named Endna and a stubborn cow named Zora. Rena learns how to let others into her heart in this story about loss, friendship, and belonging. We are grateful to Ms. Spade for her continued work on our behalf. She makes us all feel like North Hills is a great place to live, work, and belong. Thank you, Ms. Spade.
Hello, my name, hello, I'm Wee Jazz, and I am here to present Good News, Bad News by Jeff Mack, in honor of school board member Arlene Bendel. This book is about a bear and a rabbit who go on a picnic. The bad news is that it starts to rain, but the good news is that Rabbit has an umbrella. The, the bad news is that the wind blows the umbrella into a tree, but the good news is that this book is clever and hilarious as it goes back and forth between good news, good and bad news, while there is lots of bad news in the world. The good news is that we have people like Ms. Bendel, Ms., Mrs. Bendel, to make our school district truly wonderful. Thank you, Ms., Mrs. Bendel, for everything that you do for us here at North Hills.
The abbreviation was Ms., and that was causing the problem.
Hello, my name is Kevin Tian, and I am an 8th grade student at North Hills Middle School. I am a member of the Service Club, Steam Club, Art Club, Latin Club, Literati Readers, the Gay Program, the Orchestra, Marching Band, and the Tech Crew for this year's musical Aladdin Junior. I am pleased to present a new book for the middle school library for one of our new school board members, Mrs. Sandra Cozera. Ms. Cozera is a North Hills High School graduate, class of 1994. Sandy and her husband Ben have moved back to the North Hill School District when their older daughter Elena was born, to ensure that she would receive the same quality education that Sandy did. Elena is now in 2nd grade at Ross Elementary School, and their younger daughter Zoe is 4 and will be starting school in a few years. Sandy is a risk management lawyer and works at a large law firm downtown. In her spare time, she enjoys playing adult recreational sports such as hockey and kickball. For Ms. Cozera, we have selected the book Girls Who Code: Learn to Code and Change the World by Rashma Sajani to be added to the middle school library collection in her honor. Sajani, founder of Girls Who Code, a national nonprofit organization that educates young women with computing skills, is on a mission to close the gender gap in technology. With the help of multicultural girls, the author introduces the concept of coding, some of its terminology, and its problem-solving process. She also explains numerous real-world applications of coding, including digital art, websites, mobile apps, animation, video games, and robots. Readers will also benefit from chapters on design, debugging, and other related topics. Particularly eye-opening are interviews with current female coders in the high-tech field and interviews with the featured multicultural girls, all of whom describe projects on which they've worked. Above all, this book makes coding less intimidated, intimidating, and more inspiring to today's young woman. Ms. Cozera, thank you for your service in leading the North Hills High School, North Hill School District in pride, tradition, and excellence.
I am an 8th grade student at North Hills Middle School. At the middle school, I am in Literati Readers and Concert Choir. I am also part of the middle school's volleyball team. Tonight, it is my honor to present a new book for the middle school library collection dedicated to North Hill School District Board Member Kathy Reed. Mrs. Reed has lived in the district for more than 40 years and has served on the North Hills, North Hill School Board for eight years. Mrs. Reed's service on our school board also extends to the Personnel Policy and Community and Intergovernmental Relations Committee. Mrs. Reed retired from the district in 2007 after working as activities coordinator for nine years. Prior to that, she worked for a district judge. Mrs. Reed has three children, all of whom are North Hills graduates. She also has two grandsons, one who attends North Hills Middle School and another who attends Westview Elementary School. In addition to her service as a school board member, Mrs. Reed is a volunteer and a member of Perry Highland Women's Club. Mrs. Reed is an avid North Hills fan. You will most likely find her in attendance at our games or band and orchestra performances, or at any activity in which her grandsons participate. The book we have chosen for the middle school library is Superwomen: Six Scientists Who Changed the World by Lori Lawler. Superwoman celebrates the scientific as well as the social significance of six incredible women who broke new grounds with their research, busted through glass ceilings with their careers, and advanced humanity's understanding of our world in the process. These amazing women defied prejudice to succeed in the sciences using genius, ambition, and perseverance. Catherine Coleman Johnson, a mathematician who calculated trajectories for NASA's flights and is one of the women who showcased in award-winning feature film Hidden Figures. Eugene Clark, an ichthyologist who swam with sharks. Marie Tharp, a cardiographer who mapped the ocean floor. Florence Holly Ellis, an anthropologist of Pueblo cultures who engineered chirring dating. Gertrude Ellen, a Nobel Prize winner pharmacist who developed treatments for leukemia and Margaret Burrbridge, an astrophysicist who formulated a theory for Quasars and helped create the Hubble telescope. ALA notable book author Lori Lawler deftly painted portraits of each of these pioneers who refused to take no for an answer, pursuing their passion through fieldwork, observation, laboratories, and research vessels in the face of sexism. The diverse group of women, all with awe-inspiring accomplishments, were active mentors and determined people who wouldn't take no for an answer. Mrs. Reed, thank you for serving as a leading woman in the North Hill School District. We hope you enjoy your book.
Hello, my name is Shelby Ponyatowsky. I'm a 6th grade student at High Cliff Elementary School. I am honored to have the privilege of honoring another important member of our school board team, Ms. Lori Rieger, the North Hill School District's School Board Secretary. Ms. Rieger is a lovely person who responsibly communicates and coordinates school board business and activities to the North Hills community. She is an essential, dynamic ingredient to our district's success. I would like to present you with the book We Are All Wonders, written and illustrated by R.J. Pellicio. With, the author has created a picture book featuring the beloved hero from the worldwide bestselling novel and movie Wonder. This book will be shared and enjoyed by our primary students to help us learn and see that we are truly all wonders. This book will be added to the High Cliff Elementary Library Collection in your honor, Ms. Rieger. This book will stand as a long-lasting symbol of our appreciation to you and your kind and wonderful service to our school district.
If not previously mentioned, my name is Olaf Carter. I am an 11th grade student over in the high school. The person I am honoring tonight is Mr. Nudi right over here. The reason that we dedicate Endurance by Scott Kelly to you is for these reasons. To begin, just as the author of the book experiences the dangers of space and a place extremely hazardous to humans, Mr. Nudi spent seven years as an Army officer in Vietnam. Similarly, wartime is something one cannot, is something one cannot prepare for, just like space. Just as Scott Kelly's experience amassed numerous discoveries that we greatly appreciate, your contribution to our country cannot be appreciated enough. Moving on, another similarity between Mr. Nudi and Scott Kelly is their fashionable sense of transportation. While Scott Kelly may fly in a spaceship, Mr. Nudi has his 1986 Alfa Romeo. Now, it's up to you guys to decide which is better. Concluding, Mr. Nudi, this book is dedicated to you for your bravery and your contributions to our country, whether it be in the Army, your participation on assorted boards and committees, or your support of our city's fine establishments such as the Autism Society of Pittsburgh. We hope that if you get the chance to read this book, you have fun and you find a little bit of yourself inside it.
So, a special thank you to all the school librarians for coordinating this fantastic As well as all of the student presenters in the audience over here, you did a fantastic Now then, board members, thank you for your generous gift of time and service to North Hill School District. We all appreciate you so much.
Thank you, Olaf. Thank you. Thank you again to all the students... Thank you again to all the students who presented. That was really a treat. Thank you so much. We do appreciate that.
Mr. Wogus, if I may interject, just before everybody goes, I couldn't let this moment pass in that the book that I have here, and it was a great selection, JavaScript for Kids. Java or Java is a programming language that I learned as a graduate student, and we're teaching this to kids now in elementary school. So, it not only shows you the long way that education has come, but the great job we do on North Hills and the great job that the kids do. This is truly amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. That's great. Thank you. Thank you once again to the students.
Several years back, I was given a book called Boy on a Bench. And after I read the book, I made a recommendation that we had a bench made for the height impaired students that we have. I understand the bench was made, but I don't know where it is. I think maybe, I was told that it was made and it was in this building, so maybe next year we should try to locate it or make it up.
Good idea. Did you have something you wanted to say? Okay, all right. Thanks again. We can now move on to board member comments. Are there any comments from board members this evening? Okay, there being none, I don't believe anybody signed up for public comment on the agenda items only. Thank you. We now can move on to the approval of the minutes of December 5, 2017, reorganization meeting and December 5, 2017, work session legislative meeting. So, I move that the board approved the minutes from those meetings per the attached. Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Olaf, I guess you have a student representative report this evening. You're flying solo, so it's all yours.
Okay, so, as of right now, the students only have one day left of the first semester. Tomorrow marks the end of the first semester.
Wow, that's fast.
I know, it's moving very quickly. Moving into the second semester, though, students will be maneuvering through different courses and schedule changes. Due to weather issues, though, North Hills now will be in school on April 2 for a snow makeup day, unfortunately. Numerous students from North Hills High School are moving on to the state level of a competition headed by the FBLA or Future Business Leaders of America. The competition will continue in early April in Hershey, Pennsylvania. Next, preparing students for college and life after high school in general. The Evening Guidance Series titled Career and College Planning for Underclassmen continues on January 17. Coming up this Saturday, oh wait, pardon me, it's actually tomorrow night, the high school will be hosting its annual dance marathon. The event runs from 5:00 to 11:00 p.m., and all proceeds will be donated to the Make-A-Wish Foundation as well as the Children's Hospital of Pittsburgh Foundation. Finally, students across the music department have been selected to participate in the PMEA district competitions. Students will be attending practices and upcoming music festivals throughout January and February.
Thank you, Olaf. Next, we can move on to superintendent's report, January Points of Pride, Dr. Manarino.
All right, I'm gonna do my best with this. Lee, my voice will hold.
There you go. There you go.
That's pretty bad.
When we hold it, I'll see.
No, I'm good. North Hills Middle School has once again been named the PA Dawn Icorn Schools to Watch. This prestigious recognition heralds the school's excellence, responsiveness to students' needs and interests, and commitment to helping all children achieve. Business ownership students in Mike Pallano's class designed and promoted and sold our reusable tumblers in partnership with our NHGOS Green Campaign and the Food Service Have you seen these rocks around town? When I came back from holiday break, there was one on my desk. It's pretty cool. So, Kindness Rocks, eighth graders have distributed colorfully painted kindness rocks with inspirational quotes in our area as part of the Kindness Rocks Project, a worldwide effort students are hoping their rocks will promote positivity and bring a smile to the face of the person who finds it. Well, it worked for me, because that was the first thing that greeted me when I came back from vacation. Westview Elementary kindergarten students continued a holiday tradition that stretches back for years. Each student built a gingerbread house with the help from a special family or friend or visitor. Our Ancient Civilizations Project at Ross Elementary saw our sixth grade students transform the building into an ancient civilization museum with presentations and displays on a culture and a time period from throughout human existence. Congratulations to Daniel Doherty, who won our seventh grade middle school's Geography B. Our high school foods class constructed gingerbread houses this year made of completely edible components, and each house was based on a famous landmark. Stop by the winter art show featuring high school and middle school artists at the North Hills Art Center on Babcock Boulevard. The show will run through January 20. Nearly fifty high school and middle school instrumentalists and vocalists have been chosen to perform at various Pennsylvania Music Educators Association music festivals and honors ensembles this year. Our athletic department will dedicate our new scoreboard in the middle school annex gym during the basketball doubleheader starting at 6:00 p.m. on January 16. The athletics department held its first-ever winter community pep rally to kick off its winter sports season, and attendees donated winter coats to the Salvation Army. Special thanks to the pep rally sponsor, Frank's Chicken and Pizza. North Hills students and staff showed their holiday spirit by donating more than $20,000 in various charitable organizations in our community and around the world during our holiday season. North Hills students came together with North Allegheny students at Macy's on National Believe Day to deposit $4,536 handwritten letters to Santa, written by students in both districts. For each letter deposited that day, Macy's doubled their normal donation amount to Make-A-Wish. So, the two schools raised $9,072 from the letters, which would nearly grant three wishes. Westview Elementary Student Council conducted a holiday food drive collecting more than 1,500 items to provide Westview families with boxes of food items for the holiday season. Every Friday, McIntyre students in fourth grade's Carrie Schmidt's class take part in a random act of kindness to brighten the days of others around them, like placing friendly notes in library books for unsuspecting readers. High Cliff Elementary staff members donated clothing, coats, books, games, and more to provide a memorable holiday season for 46 High Cliff families. Ross Elementary students and staff members raised $8,022 for Make-A-Wish Ross Elementary families in need this holiday season, and for the grandchild of a staff member who is battling cancer. As a winner of the Chevron Leaders in the Classroom Award, middle school teacher Joe Welsh was treated to a once-in-a-lifetime experience during a recent Pittsburgh Steelers Our middle school Service Club students purchased and wrapped 45 pairs of new slippers for residents at the Vincentian Nursing Home Facility for the holiday. Every year, McIntyre Elementary fourth grade teacher Fred Mathias gets presents from his students for the holidays. This year, he requested donations for the North Hills Backpack Initiative and the pantry instead of presents. His students responded by donating hundreds and hundreds of items for the two programs. Reminder, kindergarten registration for 18-19 school year, since Olaf clearly states that it's the end of the semester tomorrow, which means we need to start thinking about 18-19 already, huh? Kindergarten registration is open? Schedule your February 19 registration appointment online today, and those are our Points of Pride, Tradition, and Excellence for the month of December.
Thank you, Dr. Manarino. We are now going to turn the floor over to Mr. Peter Van Cherry, who is from Hosak, Speck, Mutzel, and Wood, to present the audit findings for the district. So, you can have the microphone.
Thank you, that's a tough crowd to follow after that. Geez, I don't sing, I don't dance, I have no presence for anybody, but we'll see what we can do with the audit report. I'm sure that's, that'll be even more exciting than that, maybe. We'll see. I think you already have a copy of the audit report. I think it was in your packet as a PDF, but would I sort of summarize everything down into a two-page report? Just gonna touch on a couple of the points in the audit report itself for the year ended The first letter you see in the report is our opinion letter on the financial statements. States we performed the audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and generally accepted government auditing standards. It's an unmodified opinion, so it states the financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Just focusing on the fund financial statements for the most part, when you look at the balance sheet, looking at your governmental funds, your general funds, fund balance at the end of 6/17 is broken into three categories: non-spendable, assigned, and unassigned. The total assigned fund balance of $9,328,000 is broken into two categories, or three categories, actually. It's assigned for future costs for Peasars and future other post-employment benefit costs. Your total unassigned fund balance at the end of the year is $4.3 million. That's approximately 5.6 of your budgeted expenditures for the year. So, that's within the ranges that the, you know, is good practice for governments. You also have two other funds, the Capital Project Fund, fund balance in there at the end of the year is $4.5 billion, and your debt service fund, there's $83,000 in that fund at the end of the year. Your revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for your general fund, total revenues for the year, $76,525,000. Your expenditures, $75 million, and then the other financing uses of $1,041,000, that was a transfer to the Capital Project Fund to fund future projects. So, your change in fund balance for the year for '16-'17 was an increase of $37,000. Now, when we compare that to what you budgeted back when you approved the budget back, you know, in May of '16, you budgeted to actually reduce your fund balance by $1.1 million. So, those variances there really were combined of two different items. Your general fund, your revenues came in over budget, $54,000, which is .07%. So, overall, you could see that your budget is pretty darn realistic when you're looking at a $77 million budget, your revenues are coming in $37,000 over. And really, the same on the expenditure side. Your expenditures came in under budget, $1,090,000, but that's only 1.4% of your total budget. So, that sort of tells, you know, when we're looking at those things, both items that your budget's realistic and you're adhering to your budget that the board had approved throughout the year. Revenues for the general fund are broken into three categories, your local, state, and federal sources. As expected, your local sources generate the majority of your revenues, 74%, you know, that's coming from real estate taxes, earned income taxes, mark and tell business, private taxes, various other items like that. Your state sources, 24%, and then direct federal funds, 1.3%. Expenditures are broken into six categories there, largest being instruction. Total expenditures there, 59%, or $45 million. And then, as you can see on that sheet, the expenditures are broken into other categories, support services, non-instructional, and debt service. Debt service being the third largest of $8.3 million. That represents the payments you're making on your principal and interest on your outstanding debt, bonds, and notes. In addition to the general fund, you also have two other funds that you operate throughout the year under governmental funds, your Capital Project Fund. Wasn't a lot of activity in there. Total expenditure's only about $1.1 million. Revenues from that basically came from the transfers from the general fund. Your debt service fund this year had a bit of activity in it, as there was some, a lot of debt issuances and refundings, a couple of things in there. The principal and interest that was paid out of that debt service fund, $8.4 million, that was the principal that was paid off when you refunded the 2012 variable rate note. You also issued bonds as part of that process. You issued the 2016 A and 2016 B bonds. They were all refunding bonds. The A bonds refunded that variable rate note, and then the B bonds refunded the 2006 and 2008 bonds. You know, they were refunded, current refundings and advanced refundings. The purpose of those was to save cash flow, as the debt service on the new bonds would be less than on the old bonds. In the financial statements in the footnotes, it explains those transactions and talks about the cash flow savings and the economic gain from that transaction. But overall, that savings was about $4.4 million over the life of those bonds that were refunded with that. In addition, in that fund, you also terminated your swap option that you had been outstanding since 2007. The swap termination fee was just a little bit over $2 million. And that was monies, those funds were all paid from monies that had been set aside in that debt service fund over the last number of years since that was entered into. So, your change in fund balance in that debt service fund did decrease by that $1.9 million, but that was mainly because of the funds that were used, that had built up in that fund, we used to terminate your swap. The last fund is your food service fund. Obviously, that's the fund that's used to support the breakfast and lunch programs throughout the district and the various buildings. The change in net position for that for the year ended 6/30/17 was a positive $172,000 in comparison to the prior year of $150,000. And those amounts are excluding any adjustments we have made for the pension liabilities that relate to that fund. The next section in the financial statements will be the footnotes. Footnotes go on for a number of pages. Details of various pieces of information in there of the government-wide statements, the basis of accounting, fixed assets, depreciation methods over those fixed assets, debt, and so forth. Just gonna touch on a couple of items in there. I know in previous years, we talked about the reporting of the net pension liability for your participation in the Peasars Plan. Peasars Plan is a cost-sharing plan, and under new accounting standards, you're required to report your proportionate share of that net pension liability on your financial statements. They're only reported on the government-wide statements, but it's still reported there and disclosed in the footnotes. Your share of that liability at the end of 6/30/17 is $127,708,000. Prior year was $110,000. So, two things happened. One, your proportionate share went up slightly, but the total pension liability of Peasars went up. That total liability for Peasars at the end of 6/30/17 is $49 billion. Previously, it was $43 billion. So, that liability went up. Obviously, that increased your liability. It's a reporting item on your financial statements. It's really all it is. It doesn't mean that you're paying that debt off in any manner other than through your required contributions. A couple of other items in the footnotes, long-term debt. There are disclosed a couple pages of notes on there. Your total outstanding bonds at the end of the year, $62,644,000. You also have $2 million in notes outstanding. Those notes relate to the debt that's related to the Beatty Project that was taken out a couple of years back. Disclosures in there on your derivative financial statements. As I mentioned earlier, you did terminate the swap option. You still do have a couple of the basis swaps left, so they're disclosed in there and it shows in there what the fair market value of those instruments are also. One new item in the financial statements for this year was in regards to the post-employment benefits. There's a new GASB statement. GASB stands for Governmental Accounting Standards Board, which I'm sure you're fairly interested in hearing about, but GASB 75 relates to other post-employment benefits and how they're reported on your financial statements. You implemented that statement early this year. As part of that statement, there was a restatement of your net assets, which is disclosed in the statements. But basically, what that does, it takes the OPEB liability, the actuarial calculation of what that net liability is for future costs for retirees, if you're paying for health or life insurance for them, and it calculates what that liability is and puts it on your financial statements. In prior years, it was calculated in a different manner and was only disclosed. Under that new standard, your liability at the end of June was $3.4 million for other post-employment benefits. Last section in the financial statements is the single audit section. This is required because the district does expend over $750,000 in federal awards. Your total federal awards that you expended were just a little over $2 million in '16-'17. As part of that, we're required to do some additional testing over specific programs that we select as a major program and test for compliance with those programs, also test for controls over, test controls over for those programs. The results basically state that we had no material instances of non-compliance that were noted in our testing, and there was no significant deficiencies noted in the controls over those federal programs. That sort of summarizes the financial statements in a quick manner. The eighty-four-page financial statements down to two pages, hopefully it provided some insight as to where the district was during the year and where you wound up at the end of 6/30/17.
Thank you, Peter. Any questions for? Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
What is the federal award?
What is the federal awards? That fund there?
What are the federal awards?
What is it?
It's funds that you're receiving through the Title I Program, Title II Program, IDEA B, IDEA B Program. Also, any of the National School Lunch Breakfast and Lunch Program and donated commodities are all considered federal awards. So that's why, since you expend over $750,000, we're required to test those under the Uniform Grant Guidance and formally known as the Single Audit.
Is that funneled down through the state?
Most of that comes through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Education, yeah. Some of those funds come through the IU, but it all really is coming from Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, you know, directly.
I couldn't understand the federal revenues are about $900,000, and this, this was $2 million.
Right. Some of that's in the food service fund, so that's not reported in your general fund, and some come from the IU also, so that shows under local sources.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Peter.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to thank David and his staff for the assistance they provided me and my staff during the audit, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, David. Thank you. We can now move on to education. That would be Mrs. Mathis.
Thank you. There are three items under education this evening. The first is the Ready to Learn Grant, which offsets the costs associated with providing full-day kindergarten program. The second is a pilot expansion of the Summer Literacy Program into grades four through six. The district currently offers a summer literacy program for K through three students who are below grade level in reading at no cost to parents. So this summer literacy expansion proposal would include a four-week pilot program in grades four, five, and six for the summer of 2018. And the board looked at three different possible pricing options for the pilot program, including offering it free of charge, offering it for $50 a week, and waiving the fee for students who qualify for the district's free or reduced lunch program. And the third item under education this evening is a grant proposal for Project Lead the Way, and this grant offsets the costs associated with offering our new biomedical science course at the high school.
Are there any questions? We need a motion.
The superintendent recommends an ISO move that the board approve education items one through three with option one selected under item two.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a comment, two comments, on the Learning to Grant and the Project Lead the Way Grant. What are the sources of those funds?
The Ready to Learn Grant is a block grant from the Department of Education. Project Lead the Way is a grant from a nonprofit that actually runs Project Lead the Way.
It's a nonprofit that?
Project Lead the Way is a nonprofit organization. They are offering the grant through them.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Mathis. We can now move on to athletics and activities. That'd be Ms. Cazaro.
There are three items under the athletic and activities this evening. The first is the contract with the Ross Township Off-Duty Police Support to provide services during the 2018 year. The second is a field trip request from the Varsity Baseball Spring Training Trip, March 22nd through 26th. And the third is the Future Business Leaders of America Trip to Hershey, which would be April 8th to 11th. Are there any questions about any of those items? The superintendent recommends an ISO move that the board approve athletics and activities, items one through three.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We can move on now to Beatty. It appears we don't have anything on the agenda. I don't know if Mrs. Bender or Mr. Newdy has anything to add regarding Beatty.
Yes, Mrs. Bender has something to add regarding Beatty. First of all, in December, Beatty hosts for school board directors and superintendents a dinner. It is used to say goodbye and thank the people who have served on the board, and this year was absolutely wonderful. We had a number of school board members who came who were never there before, and Eric Heasley, who happens to be our executive director, was absolutely thrilled. The second thing that I have are the Students of the Month. North Hill Students of the Month for November and December. In automotive technology, Brennan McLeod. In cosmetology, Maya Sini. Hope I'm saying these names correct. Culinary, Elijah Peters. Sorry, Peterson. Early childhood education, Krista Lefakis. HVAC, David Rana. And smart EST is Alex Dietrich. These are the students from North Hills who were chosen as Students of the Month. What I learned the last time I was at Beatty, which I didn't know, the woman who's in charge of this particular, the teacher who's in charge of this, was cutting out coupons from the, it's that store where the ham places.
Honey Big Ham.
And.
On McKnight Road?
Yes. Where they have all kinds of things for people who do their own, you know, projects.
Harbor Freight?
Pardon me?
You're thinking of Harbor Freight?
Harbor Freight.
Mm-hmm.
And what she had told me, which I was not aware of, is they go and they buy the stuff, and you buy something, you get something free, or you go in and you get something free. And what happens is that the Students of the Month are called in, and they get to pick what they would like, and it usually is in connection with what their field is. So I thought that was really nice.
It's nice.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments.
Thank you.
Mr. Newdy, do you have anything to add regarding Beatty? Any other thoughts?
Nothing.
Thank you. Okay. We can now move on to personnel action items. That would be Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. August. Personnel items are addressed in executive session. Therefore, the superintendent recommends an ISO move that we approve personnel items one through six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. We can move on to community intergovernmental relations. That would be Mrs. Reed.
We only have one under there, and that is the Revised School Board Meeting Calendar. This had to be, oh, excuse me. This had to be redone due to the fact that there were meetings that were conflicting with each other, basically legislative or work session meetings.
Okay. We need a motion, we need a motion on that, if you don't mind.
Okay. The superintendent recommends an ISO move that we approve item one.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion regarding the calendar? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Reed. Legislative update, Mr. Newdy, we have nothing on the agenda, but is there anything you have to add or would like to add?
Yes, I, there's one item, the hot item in Harrisburg this week and for the next couple of weeks. It's going to be Senate Bill Two, which is a, an educational savings account that would be given to families. The amount, I believe, is $57,000, $5,700 a year. Given to families who are in failing school districts where the, the school district is in the lower 15 percent of PSSA and Keystone scores. This has been proposed several times. It was voted down by one vote. However, the dissenting vote in the past has now been replaced by a fellow named Alway, who is from Chambersburg, I believe, and that's in Franklin County. Franklin County has no failing schools. So the thing is up in the air, is he have any skin in the game as to whether he's going to vote to approve the savings, educational savings account. The thing is, even though he does not have anyone in the, in his district, the caveat here with this savings account is, once a family receives that money, they have it forever. For instance, if we would have somebody who was receiving that money moves into North Hill School, that's $100 a year, even though we are not a failing school district.
Wow.
So the money follows the child.
Okay.
So that's it. I, I'm going to contact Senator Volokovich and see if we can get his support in defeating that particular bill when it comes to the floor.
For sure. Thank you, Mr. Newdy, for the update. It appears we don't have anything under policy as far as any items. Do you have anything you want to add under policy that might, for the good of the cause or anything that you have?
Well, we are going to have the policy meeting.
Okay.
Next week.
Okay.
Okay. Discuss the.
Great.
The nutritional.
Oh, yeah.
Programs.
Good idea. All right. Thank you. Being that Dr. Norlish isn't here this evening, I'll take finance, and we do have eight items under finance to approve. One is the general fund bills. Two are the construction fund bills. Three is the capital project fund bills. Four are the budget transfers. Five is the payroll for the month of December 2017, the amount of $1,875,327. Six is the approval of the audited financial statements for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2017. Number seven is the Resolution 2018-1 Limiting Authority to Increase the Real Estate Tax Rate for 2018-2019 Access. And eight is the Resolution 2017-10 Revising the Delinquent Tax Collector. Are there any questions on items one through eight? There being none, I would make a motion that the superintendent recommends an ISO move that the board approve the finance items one through eight.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have two other informational items on the agenda. The summary statement of revenues and expenditures for fiscal year 2017, 2018, for the month of December 2017. And the other informational item is the revenue summary for 2017-18 as of December 2017 on audited. So those are there for your review. If you have any concerns or questions about them, I'm sure you could take that up with Mr. Hall.
I just have one statement, and that is that our budget meeting, the public budget meeting, has been rescheduled for June 25th.
In January?
June.
Okay.
Yeah, June 25th. January 25th.
Okay.
So those people who have signed up, it's then, and hopefully more people will be able to attend. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for that reminder. Under support services, we have, we have two items. We have a change order approval for McIntyre Elementary, the construction addition, and the second one is the high school building roof replacement. Any questions on those two? Okay. There being none, I, the superintendent recommends an ISO move that the board approves support service items one and two.
Second.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we do have an informational item from Thomas and Williamson for the McIntyre Construction Project. It's a monthly progress report through December 2017. That brings us to the end of the agenda. Do we have anybody in, from our standing room only audience that would have any additional public comments regarding the meeting or anything they'd like to address the board? Okay. Thank you. There being none, I will, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.